Good evening, everybody. How are you? My name is Bob Breen. I'm the Chair for the Acting Chair for the Zoning Board of Appeals for North Reading. Today is Thursday, March 7, 2024, 2024, excuse me. This is a continuation of the meeting that was scheduled for the last Thursday. It was carried over till tonight with the appreciation of the board as we were unable to make quorum due to the unavailable ability, our last minute unavailability of two of our members. That being the case, we continue the agenda from last week to this evening. With that being said, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order with regard to the and from the panel with the board, Maria Lockhart and, excuse me, Michelle. Bob, geez, Michelle, your last name.
Bodie, sorry, let me say it for you.
Thank you. The participation of Jerry Noel, Building Inspector, and Kathy Morgan, Building Department for the Town of North Reading. We have two matters carrying over from last week, the continued public hearings. With regard to those, the two matters, for a home occupation special permit by Michael Lopez from 191 North Street, with all with as Acting Chair, the second matter, Three Main Street, an appeal of the Building Commissioner's decision from on behalf submitted by applicant Harry Gressick and represented by attorney Joseph Keys. I've been told by Kathy Morgan that the appellant in that matter is looking to withdraw. And as that should move the matter along rather quickly, I'm going to shift the matters on the agenda for tonight. His attorney Keys with us this evening.
Yes, I am.
Good evening, Attorney Keys. Thank you for joining. Representing the applicant, a form was sent to the attention of the board late sometime this afternoon, noting a request to withdraw. Is that true?
Yes, that is true. I'm just having trouble getting my. Can you guys see me?
No.
These?
No.
No.
All right, but you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let's go with that then. Yes, so I spoke to the Building Inspector earlier today. Kathy, I emailed you the request for the withdrawal without prejudice, probably about 5:30 or so this evening. I don't know if you got it?
Yes, I received it.
Okay, so yes, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to withdraw our appeal of the Building Inspector's decision. I spoke to Mr. Noel earlier, and the plan is to have the trucks out of there. By the end of the month, we need to notify the tenant that we're not pursuing the the matter any further and that they need to go. So we need to give them a little bit of notice. You know, we want to be respectful to the neighbors in the neighborhood and we'll get it all cleaned out, but we just need a little bit of time.
That's fine. Thank you for that. Kathy, if you can get the image on the screen of the request to withdraw. Is that available to you?
I have.
Just in case, I know. That's fine. I know I received it and it was sent. I have a copy, but I can't get it to screen respectfully. To that point, I'll just read the text. I request to withdraw, submitted to the Board of Appeals, March 7, 2024. I, inside being the applicant or the applicant's representative, do here in request to withdraw my petition petition to appeal of a building commissioner's cease and desist order without prejudice located and noting Three Main Street and submitted on behalf of the applicant by Joseph F. Keys, attorney, and noted there too. So is there anything further, Mr. Key Attorney Keys? Okay. If that being the case, I'd like to close that hearing. Any position taken by the board regarding this request to withdraw without prejudice?
Maria Lockhart in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, agreed. No issues. Michelle Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, aye.
Once we actually make the motion.
Okay, with that in mind, would anybody like to, as the Acting Chair, I'll just move to approve the applicant the applicant petitioners request to withdraw. And with that in mind, take a vote of the Acting Board. So to that point, can I get a second on my motion?
Second on your motion.
Thank you. With that, call the question. And since we're going to go with the active members, Michelle, we'll start with you.
Bodie and I.
Maria Lockhart, aye.
Bob Breen, aye. That being the case, motion carries. The request to withdraw is approved and agreed to without prejudice and will be entered into the record. Thank you to Attorney Keys and to the applicant and again, Inspector Noel for his participation in the matter. Thank you. Good luck and let us know how things go if there's any problems further. Going return to the agenda. Regarding 191 North Street, a home occupation special permit submitted by Michael Lopez to that effect. Hearing notice. Petition of Michael Joseph Lopez, 191 North Street, North Reading, MAP 13, parcel six for a home occupation special permit to run his office for his electrical business soon to Article 200-42 North Reading zoning bylaws. Is Mr. Lopez with us this evening?
Present.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Lopez. If you might take a moment to let us know what with regard to your occupation, special permit for occupation is regarding.
It's just to begin a electrical business. I've been doing electrical for 10 years. I'm also a firefighter, so it's my part-time career. And I'm looking, I'm licensed and I'm looking to start my own business and pretty much sums it up.
Right. Is there any notice was posted to the publication, correct Kathy?
Yes.
To that point, is there any, are there any any members of the community, the address adjacent, anybody from the community that is joining us tonight that might have might want to offer support or have concerns regarding the application regarding 191 North Street? Kathy, anything submitted to the to your office that we might make note of that might be laid to the file?
I think there was something submitted from CPC, but that was it. And it didn't get into the pack. I can made it into the record if you want.
Please, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
To the Zoning Board of Appeals from the Community Planning Commission, February 29, 2024, regarding 191 North Street Home Occupation Special Permit. In response to your request for comment, the CPC offers the following. The CPC does not object to the proposal as long as the home occupation regulations in your zoning bylaws are adhered to Section 200-42. Thank you for offering us the opportunity to comment on this application.
Noted. Thank you for that, Kathy. Since there doesn't seem to be any other interested parties or information needed, I'd like to move to close the public hearing. Can I get a second?
I'm Maria Lockhart, second the motion.
Thank you, Maria. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Vote name and and support or otherwise.
Michelle Bodie and I.
Bob Breen, aye. Thank you. Thank you, Brendan. So we'll open the matter to discussion from the board. You offer any questions or concerns to the applicant?
What exactly is Section 200-42?
It's the home occupation rules and the standards that go along with it. No one, no clients at the office, only 300 square feet, only a one-ton truck.
So what what does he what does he mean by an electrical business, like an electrician?
Sure, Mr. Lopez?
I have a journeyman license, so I can only work under my license, which is my name. I can only have one employee working under me, so technically it's just myself and I would only have one vehicle if that. It's basically my license just allows me to pull permits and perform electrical work in the state of Massachusetts.
Okay, so no, no one would come to the home then?
No, it's not like an office, office. It's it's just so I can legitimately like make a business and I can go through and do all the banking and all that good stuff.
Okay, and you said one truck?
If that.
And no signage?
Uh, no, definitely not.
So I familiarity with electricians in my own family. So all this, so you're going to go offsite for the jobs, picking up stock? Are there going to be any stock deliveries there? Or you're going to do everything, pick up and bring to the job site?
Mostly pickup. That's how I run now, and that's how I've always done business. I've never done like a night train where they deliver overnight. And in past experiences, bosses have had to have U-Haul or storage facilities where they would have to deliver their stock there because of the same kind of ruling in that city or town. So I mean, I get that.
Any, just out of curiosity, any conversations with your neighbors or any reason to have any, has anybody if you approached anybody, told anybody that you're going to actually be more of a formal business as opposed to what you might have been doing up until now?
No, quite frankly, I I'm friendly with my neighbors, but other than that, I've only lived in the city for four years now, or town, I should say. So I'm still new here.
Okay. And so with regard to the rest of the board, any any questions, further comments, otherwise? That being the case, does anybody want to make a motion to close the the hearing?
I'm Maria Lockhart, moved to close the public hearing or private hearing?
Thank you, Maria. So does anybody want to make a motion with regard to the application by Mr. Lopez for 191 North Street?
Um, sorry, let me just second Maria's close of
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Public hearing. I'm Michelle Bodie and second, and we can take roll call on closing the public hearing.
Thank you. So does anybody want to bring a motion or have any concerns regarding the application?
Hi, Maria Lockhart, moved to approve the application for a homeowner's permit at, is it 191 North Street? With with only no more than one truck, no signage, no employees or customers at the job site and no no other vehicles.
With regard to the special permit, which of course runs for four years, does anybody have a second?
I'm Michelle Bodie and second.
Understood. Thank you. So with the motion before the board, all in favor?
I'm Maria Lockhart, in favor.
Michelle Bodie and I.
Bob Breen, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. So again, Mr. Lopez, the the permit as set forth under 200-42, again, no person other than the residential occupant shall be employed therein, no more than 300 square feet within the house, within the address shall be used for the devoted to the the home occupation. We should know display of goods, wares, or signage referred to the home via other than the home occupation visible from the exterior of the home. Special permit for the home occupation runs with the applicant and therefore is not transferable from you. There'll be no customers coming to the premises and the permit shall be valid for four years. And again, the period, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, 20 days appeal.
Once it's stamped in, there's a 20-day appeal period.
So after 20 days, you can stop by Town Hall, Mr. Lopez, and pick up a record of the permit.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck with everything. And again, thank you for submitting the occupation to the town so we can formally note the activity at 191 North Street. Appreciate that. Good luck. And good luck with the fire department as well.
Thank you.
Since there's no notice of any new business, we only on the other matter on the the agenda is the the minutes that carried forward from those from our meeting of January 25. Seems like a lifetime ago. Has anybody had a chance to review the minutes? So it was Brendan, myself and Maria were the were the acting, the participating board member. That was Nine Bingham Road, the permit to raise chickens.
I did read those, actually. I thought you said February, but you said January. Yes.
Does anybody want to make a motion to admit the minutes, approve and admit the minutes to the to the record?
That January 26 or 29?
January 25. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Maria Lockhart, moved to approve the minutes from January 25, 2024 into the record.
Thank you. Can we get a second, Brendan?
I, Brendan Riley, second the motion.
Thank you. Can we get a vote? All in favor?
I'm Maria.
Bob Breen, aye?
Brendan Riley, aye.
Thank you, Brendan and Maria. Minutes will be therefore admitted. So that pretty much closes the agenda for tonight. We do have a housekeeping matter that has been put off. So the the rule under the zoning board is at this time, I'm the acting chair. We do have to take a formal vote to make a take it from a an acting position to a to the the true chair, as the case might be. I have no problem with the with that being the chair for the board. And unless if anybody else wants to offer a thought on that, I'd be more than happy to hear for the record as the case is or should be noted.
I think you should be the chair, Bob.
Yeah, very much agreed.
I agree.
Okay.
Not just to say not it, but you're doing a great job.
Tag, you're right. With that being said, we do have to make a formal vote. Somebody, one of the acting members, Maria and or Michelle, to bring a motion?
I'm Maria Lockhart, moved to appoint Bob Breen as the formal acting chair of the board. I'm the formal chair of the board, no longer the acting, the former chair, yes.
Can you get a second?
Michelle Bodie and second.
Thank you, Michelle and Maria. With that being the case, call the question to a vote?
Maria Lockhart, aye.
Michelle Bodie and aye.
Bob Breen, aye. Thank you. So the other part, point of business on that is that there's always a second chair, an associate chair position. In the in that case, in the past, Jen asked me and I said, no problem with it, that either leaves Michelle and or Maria, I it's at your at your at your, it doesn't have to be formally voted on, but it's more a question of your thoughts respectively.
I guess I might as well do it, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say rock, paper, scissors. So there you go.
Well, you know, pistols at 20 feet. Jerry, can you get me, can you look the other way on that so we don't violate any kind of vote? But thank you. So Maria will note you as the the associate chair. Thank you for that. And that concludes the formal matters. Yes, Kathy?
There is a clerk's position as well, which you
Michelle?
And I don't think we've had anyone since Vincent. I don't know, but there is a clerk if we're gonna do it.
Fair enough. I think it it falls. I Michelle.
Volunteer's tribute.
Thank you. And you can, you can, you, since it seems to be a cloak and dagger kind of position, you can just find a way to let her know what she has to do. And when you do that, let me know because I'm curious to know what that is as well. So concludes the business for tonight. Kathy, so we, in the last meeting, we discussed the next meeting date?
Yes, it's the 28th of March.
Availability across the board, Brendan, Maria, Michelle, Jerry, if as the case might be, for Thursday, March 28?
Grab my calendar.
Good for me. And I'll be better at participation. Sorry.
That's quite all right. As I noted on the regular in discussion last week, we've had great success with meeting quorum and in that, as these things go forward, especially since this is obviously a volunteer board, given the weight and the power that the Board of Appeals has, that doesn't mean that we are ever supposed to just neglect our own lives. So in the event that you have a difficulty or a conflict, please do not hesitate to let us know. It's it's all for the betterment of both the community, but the community is relying upon us, but at the same time, we all have our own lives and that should be respected and acknowledged. So Maria, with regard to the 28?
Yes, I actually do have that available.
Great, wonderful. The other thing, Kathy sent these out as well. So and I have had discussions and we, it goes without saying, there's been a number of, there's been, I think it's six applicants that have submitted to the select board, Kathy.
Yes, I think it was five or six I sent you today.
So as the case may be, you know, it's often prudent to reach out to the people in advance. I don't know if that was the case with anybody else on the board, just to let them know what it, what the zoning board does and inherently make them understand the commitment, if you know, that is expected of us. And then those recommendations are by anybody on the board can be made to the select board as they will make the final decision amongst themselves at a future meeting. The question I have is, does anybody want to take a moment and reach out to the applicants to let them maybe take questions from them or give them a heads up as to what we do? Last thing on this, and I made the comment to Kathy this afternoon. When you look at the the town and the boards that exist here, be it planning or environmental or conservation, this board has substantial power because we in the case of all, so many of the board recommendations are made, or they're following conservation bylaws or state laws. In the case of the board appeals, our board, we have we have our, the word escapes me, but we're not bound particularly by the bylaws. In fact, our job is to we have discretion in order to go outside of those, as is the case in the past for need. And that carries with it a weight. Our decisions, if they're going to be appealed, are the only ones other than maybe the select board, Jerry, you might correct me if I'm wrong. You go to court if you want to try to appeal a decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals for this town. And that carries with it substantial sense of ability and responsibility. So no disrespect or this is in no way a slight of anybody who's volunteering to do anything on behalf of the North Reading community, but I don't think it should be lost on anybody, that the Zoning Board of Appeals has a bit, not only with that responsibility, but the ability, and that carries weight. And I think it's important that people understand that, not to give them any sense of great hour or whatever you might think it might be, but just so people understand. And we are going to be put to a task, as is the case was presented in the past with developments, no matter, not just the 40B that is of interest to everybody, but other things. What you do with your property affects the community, your neighbors, and what goes on. And I don't think that should be taken lightly. You know, for example, the withdrawal tonight by the by the party at 191 North. I mean, excuse me, Three Main Street, that's substantial. You know, the idea that you can just kind of do with your property what you might want or think you can isn't always the case. And through a lot of people's hard work and dedication and just concern, I think that has to be understood. And when there is a disagreement, they might come to us. When there is a need, they will come to us. And our decisions should be made, as I think they always have been, prudently, with consideration, in fairness. We are a body of equity as much as we are one that follows black and white rules, and I don't think that should be lost on anybody. And with that being said, I think it's important that the applicants understand that. I have no problem reaching out to them. I'm sure they have questions, but this isn't just, you know, something that should be taken lightly. I know Jerry takes his job very seriously and I think we we owe a lot of our consideration and appreciation to everybody that does this. But again, this is a board that makes very strong decisions that, quite frankly, affect people's lives. And I think that that's important and should be understood by anybody that comes before us or wants to join us in these efforts. So if anybody, I can, if you're interested and have the time to reach out and maybe just let people know your thoughts on participating in the Board of Appeals. It'd be a great help if you do. You don't have to tell us now, but you can send a note along to Kathy and we can send you a name and the contact information and try to and facilitate that that conversation and we'll leave it at that. So just keep that in mind as you go through your day tomorrow. And let us know if you might want to take a moment to talk to people. We have two alternate positions. The board is made up of six, the six acting voting members and the three, the three associate members. Jerry, you might have a better idea. Jen was an associate member for a great length of time before becoming first an active member and then obviously rising to chair. And to her credit, you know, spent a And to her credit, you know, spent a lot of time with the, the Board of. Board of Appeals and. You know, I don't think, it didn't go unnoticed to me because I, I know that. But it's, you know, I have a great deal of appreciation for Jen's work in the past and you probably spent a great deal of time. Watching her involvement. So to her credit. You know, you have perspective because you've been involved in these meetings a great deal longer than any of the four of us have.
Oh, what it, what you all do is extremely important and with me. Trying to make sure that I'm gaining compliance. And making sure that everybody is following the rules and regs and how I am interpreting the zoning bylaws. Then when it goes to you as a variance and or a special permit, I think it's fantastic that the board. Reviews this, goes through the notes that I put together and also reviews the zoning board of. We use. The ZVA rules and regulations. And comes their, their own decision as well.
Thank you for that. So again, if anybody has any interest in. Reaching, reaching out to the, the applicants and letting them, letting them know your thoughts on the board. It'd be helpful, not only to them, but for us going forward as well. So I just wanted to throw that out to you.
Before we move on. I'd be up for doing it, but is there a way we could divide up the list? So that way we each only talk to a couple since I think there's, I'm surprised how many, which is good to have that much interest.
That was my thoughts. We'll just see who amongst Brendan, Maria, Michelle and myself want to do it and we'll just, we'll go from there.
I'm happy to take a couple as well.
Great, and we'll give, you know, we'll make sure that the, you know, you might actually know the people. Kathy, did you send those just to me?
No, I send them to everyone.
Okay, you know, so take a look at the list. There, there, it's, you know, less than half a page. But if you recognize a name, all the better. You know, it, it just, you know, again. I know people join, join. Get involved in the community and then find themselves, you know, wondering if it was a good idea. And I don't want them to have. Any kind of stress or tension or anxiety and I just, at the same time, I want them to understand. Most especially with what's going on in the town and maybe truly, I made this comment. You know, to Kathy, I think today when we were just touching base with regards to this. You know. There's, there's a shortage of housing and, and we're, you know, there's a lot of. You know. How people use their properties in this. Century really is worlds different than what it used to be when the, the bylaws were drafted. And, you know, I often, I used to. Tell Jen that. You know. Everybody quite frankly wonders sometimes if the bylaws. Are enough or if there has to be changes and there's, there's need. For a lot of things, but. That's why our job becomes all the more important. Because it just speaks to. How we. Not only see what's going on in the immediate, but we also have to keep an eye on what's gone in the past. Precedent, if you want to think of it that way, because it will have a carry forward effect. So I don't take anything that this board does lightly. I think all of our decisions have weight. And whether they facilitate. The best interest of the community, the ability of, of Jerry and his offices to make sure that. What one, what is, whatever, what is going on in the community is consistent and allowable. You know, all of these things really find their way to us and. In a lot of cases where. I think Michelle said it best in a couple of meetings ago. Sometimes people just, this is. They're, we are their last resort. In order to get something that they need and we have to weigh that. And I, you know, I'd like to close with. An acknowledgement that everybody who's on this board now and has served on it in the past, I'm sure. Should all take a good feeling of. Should be commended and appreciated. And I don't know if everybody gets it. I really don't care if they get it. I just want them to understand. Why it is important. And, and you know, you should all take a great deal of satisfaction and, and credit for spending your time. And, and really not just thinking. Your decisions are me, our decisions, the board of, this board's decisions are being made for. An entire community, not only the one that exists now, but those going forward. And I think it's. It's been very worthwhile and. I have. A very strong opinion that we're, we're doing a lot of really good work here. So thank you for that. With that being said, enough is enough. For tonight. Does anybody want to move to close the meeting?
Sure, Michelle Bodie moved to close tonight's meeting.
And with a second.
Maria.
Thank you. All in favor of close of the meeting for tonight?
Brendan Riley, aye.
Maria Lockhart, aye.
Barbara and I, thank you all. And again, March twenty-eighth, Kat?
Yes.
Okay, great. Kathy's going on vacation. Have safe travels Kathy. And get, get as much sunshine as you can squeeze out of Florida. People go out for sunny, sunny days and, and mild breezes. Thank you. Good night, everybody. Thank you again for your, your helping, your assistance tonight.